And I had a more fun call, I had to go take it, so I left him back behind. And he goes, well, they lowered the price a little bit. And I said, oh, okay, what'd they come down to?
It's a little bit cheaper.
Yeah.
So.
So, that's where we're at, we're still waiting to hear from them on the final cost.
Recording in progress.
All right, good evening, everyone, the time is now seven P M., I call to order our city council meeting for Monday, November third. For everyone that is able to, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I, can I remind the audience to turn and silence their cell phones as well as city council and for council to turn their mics on and speak loud and proud into them? Ms. Hogan, do you want to take roll call, please?
Councilmember Rounds?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Doughty?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Frymark?
Here.
Councilmember Friend?
Here.
Councilmember Houston has called and said he'll be a few minutes late, but he said he'll make it this evening.
Okay. And away we go. All right, um, next item, citizens communications for items not on the agenda. We had one item on there from John, John and I talked about it, he was looking to see what was available for rentals here. For city buildings, and again, we have the community center and we have the civic centers that are available. Um, as well as the, um, red shelter down at Horseshoe Park. Um, so, that takes care of that one, didn't want him to think I didn't cover it off. Anything from anyone in the audience, the, uh, online or in the room here? Citizen comments, not on the agenda. All right, agenda approval.
I make a motion to approve the agenda, except for the removal of action item E, second.
So I have a proposed num- off, um, a motion here to approve the agenda as is with the removal of action item E, which is authorize the mayor to sign an M O U. With the Police Officers Association for modification of patrol shifts for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. I have a first and a second. Ms. Hogan.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
So, there has that, we will approve the agenda as is, we will strike, strike action item E. All right, moving into public hearing, it is now seven oh two, let's go into public hearing. And this is on ordinance number fifteen eighty-one, fixing the amount to be provided by ad valorem taxes upon the property in the city of Woodland in twenty twenty-six. And approving an ordinance summary for publication as more particularly set forth herein. All right. Um, for, uh, fifteen eighty-one is the proposal to, uh, not raise property taxes. Um, as we get into the budget proposal, later in the agenda, you'll see that our revenues exceed our expenses and we're able to increase some of our reserves. One percent runs around anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand dollars. Yes, we can get into the compounding, so if we save fifteen thousand dollars this year, that one percent next year is going to save a hundred and fifty dollars. You know, by the time we get twenty years out of here, we might be down, you know, a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars. I'm okay with that, as somebody who has lived here for thirty years and has seen what happens with property taxes, I am all for us as a city, not putting more burden on our community. Um, I want to be clear when we talk about property taxes, I talked about last council meeting. Um, property taxes are fluctuate based on assessment. If your assessment goes up, your assessment goes down. Additionally here, property taxes in twenty twenty-four did not have a school levy, twenty twenty-five, they did have a school levy. That is not the city of Woodland, that is completely outside, we are two different taxing districts. I just want people to be aware, a lot of times that they will call the city and say, hey, why are my property taxes going up? Again, outside of that, but with inside the city of Woodland, I'm proposing that we do not raise the one percent property taxes. Any comments, questions from community, council?
I agree, I don't think we should raise it at all this year, the economy is such that people are having a hard time making it right now. And we may have to increase our water a little bit, our utilities, so I think it's best that we don't do this.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I also agree, I think the point that you made is key though, that just because we do not increase the rate does not mean your property taxes will not go up.
Right.
It's valuation of your property, so just keep that in mind when you get the bill, that it had nothing to do with us increasing a rate, it was the county assessor.
The total collected amongst our, you know, call it twenty-two hundred homes, um, throw in our property, you know, our three thousand parcels here in the city. The same dollar amount is collected, year over year, which is right around nine hundred, you know, between nine hundred and a million dollars for property taxes. All right? With that, I think we have direction unless there's somebody else. Um, that is what public hearing is and then we can get into the agenda, any comments or questions from the audience or anyone online? Having none, it is now seven oh six and we will leave public hearing. Reports to city council.
Well.
I'm sorry, I've been enjoying the rain.
You're daydreaming. I was going to go to Pocatello, Idaho for my, um, uh, grandson-in-law that works at, uh, he's a coach at the college there. Well, we took Alaska, we were three hours late getting out of Portland, got to Seattle. And the computers all went down, so we sat on the tarmac for over thirty minutes, we missed our exist, our connecting flight. And so they, they didn't have any flights for the next day, they only, they only had us going to Salt Lake City, so that just, we just told them we'd just come back home. So they put us down for a ticket. So by four o'clock in the morning after four cancellations, we left the airport with the cab and went to a car rental and rented a car and came back home. So we were up all night long. But it was quite the ordeal, so we, just yesterday was able to contact them to try to get our money for the car rental and the whole bit. But anyway, we'll see how that goes, and then, um, I had a, um, I was at Chamber the last few weeks and saw some debates. And, um, I was in one myself, so that's been what I've been up to.
And I would throw out the Chamber piece with the debates, um, I was able to make, I think, three out of the four. Um, I thought they were all great, I appreciate Chamber putting those on, it was a great way for community members to meet, uh, the candidates. The only thing that I would say is remember to vote, if you haven't turned in your ballot, there is a drop box across the street from city hall, there on third. Um, please drop your box off, it is something that we all get to do as, um, US citizens, so. Okay?
Agreed.
Anything else?
Um, quickly for the record, uh, at seven oh seven, councilmember Houston has joined the meeting this evening.
Nope, so seven oh seven, excellent. Any other reports of city council?
I love the rain.
Miss Doughty?
Unfortunately, our football season has come to an end. Um, it was a hard loss against Ridgefield on Friday, so they did not make the playoffs, so, um, a sad day on Friday for everybody. It was very cold, very wet, bunch of crazy calls, but yeah, so unfortunately that was sad, but new seasons are about to start. But our volleyball starts districts this week, and so that's exciting that they did make districts. And I think our girls soccer had some games too, I believe, so, um, yeah, so still have some sports going on, so go out and cheer for them, you get a chance.
Excellent. Mr. Burke?
Don't forget, the twenty-second is Turkey Bingo and the Snowflake Bazaar. You want to come over there and have fun, we fill, we packed the house, and that's going to be at the high school, uh, starting.
Doors open at five thirty.
Nine o'clock.
Three cards for fifteen dollars cash only, please. I'm here for you, buddy.
Okay, well, I was going to get to that. But I'll let you go.
Wait.
We got plenty of time.
So. Absolutely agree. So, anything else from council?
Oh, I will say, the play, if you know any kids in Woodland, right now, they only have about twenty-something kids signed up for the Lion King Junior. And they are needing more kids because there's more, more roles that need to be filled than kids who have signed up. So if you know anyone from elementary through high school that's interested in performing, please have them, um, reach out, Rhonda Othis is the one leading the charge on that. So I would encourage that as well.
Excellent, anything else? All right, moving into reports to standing committees. Public Works was tonight, is that you?
No, that, that would be me.
Oh, Mr. Hall, sorry, my bad.
We had our meeting this evening, um, and all were present, we have, um, mostly good news tonight. The, um, we had no water quality issues this last month. Uh, we had, um, we're almost done with the, um, mixed flush valves for the sewer lift stations, we're down to, station three is all that's left to finish up there, that's coming soon. And, um, on streets, um, you'll be glad to know that the highway five oh three going out, uh, past the Lewis River subdivision, that is scheduled, that roadwork's scheduled to be done the end of this week, so. All, you know, knock on wood, that's almost behind us, so thank you for your patience on that. As far as facilities, the old library, uh, remodel is nearly done, um, and that's, that's coming to completion, that'll be called the Old Schoolhouse, it'll be the new name. Also, um, the Gun Club project, uh, that, uh, is set for a preliminary, uh, or a pre-construction hearing, I should say. On the twentieth, and we expect to be able to actually start that construction on the twenty-fourth yet this month, so that'll get underway. Paving won't get done this fall, but, um, but the concrete work should, so we're looking forward to that. Leaves, the leaves will get swept up the end of this month, so hopefully by then they'll all fall, we, this got pushed out a month. We had one of those Indian summers where the whole leaves stayed on, it's really beautiful out there, but, um, but they'll be gone by the end of the month. And then, uh, also good news, I think you guys will be excited to know that the Little League, uh, proposal for the water meter, uh, that Aaron Alderman came and spoke about is, uh, is going to happen. Uh, we got a couple of local, uh, folks that have stepped up to, to meet those, uh, financial needs and, um, the city's helping with that. And we're, um, we're going to be, uh, doing that, hopefully maybe within a, a week or so, it's just a matter of an application, so that's nearly done. And I think I'll leave the rest of the long list of things that Public Works is working on, um, for later discussion.
Any questions from council or anyone in the audience regarding Public Works? All right, we'll go into reports to see, uh, officers, the mayor's report, uh, I will tie in a little bit to Public Works. Um, Make a Difference Day that was, uh, held last weekend. Um, I wanted to give a huge shout out to, uh, councilmember Houston down here, um, it was pouring down rain. And I, I mean, we were miserable, but I have to give kudos to, uh, Gabe here, there was a house overgrown. And he was out there and had volunteers with him and I drove past, what, at one point, um, when I left one of the houses I was working at. And it was a serious improvement, so thank you, Gabe, for everything you did, uh, on that house there. We had roughly seventy-five, uh, eighty volunteers, shout out to all the different organizations that came. Um, I know there's individuals here in the audience that were there, um, it really was a big, uh, lift. And I want to give a shout out to the Public Works individuals and also to Kathy Morrison, who works very diligently, uh, on that, finding volunteers, she comes in on that Saturday. She gets people to volunteer, donate, um, and it's stressful to her, so shut up.
I just want to say something too, I must have called her ten times that day, and every time I did, she, she had whatever I needed there within the ten minutes, so, yeah, it was great.
So, um, there's that. Um, I want to, so I should have said it in citizen communications for items not on the agenda, there will be part of the meeting minutes here, there will be a letter that is attached in here from the chamber. The chamber sent a letter into the city, um, asking about various things related to LTAC. So, just so we can have a dialogue, and I will ask Emily to unmute in case I get out over my ski tips here. So it was asking for various legal opinions and different things like that. I've had conversations with Emily, and it's not the city's position to give legal advice and legal opinions outside entities of the city. If there is a issue where we get into, you know, legality, if we've done something wrong, or, you know, we're out of compliance, that is why we have a city attorney here to help us. And that's why we also hire Emily to help us in our council agenda, um, various things that we do, we send them to Emily's firm, um, and get, um, corrections, buyoffs, and all of those things. So I just want people to be aware, there will not be a communication or anything coming back from the city. Um, one, it's not the city's position to spend money and hire outside legal councils, we do that. Is there something you wanted to say, Emily?
Uh, I think you covered it, uh, pretty well, if, uh, you know, the mayor or councilmembers have concerns about city risk or liability, that's really what we're here for.
Okay. Questions from council? I just didn't want anyone to wonder what Diane Hart was doing on that. Um, upcoming items here, we have, uh, I'm going to mute you, Emily, just to make sure we don't have. Um, upcoming items here, we have the city offices, it'll be celebrating Veterans Day next week, we have city council meeting on the seventh,teenth, we have a planning commission meeting coming up, then we have a, another city council meeting. Winter Fest is coming up, that is something that happens downtown, uh, Woodland Revitalization. Um, and the city, uh, co-sponsors that, then we also have a special meeting on the eighth, if we need that for our budget meeting, and then the fifteenth. One last thing I would like to give a shout out to was downtown trick-or-treating, I think it was probably the largest that we have had in five to ten years since I have really been actively involved. Well, between the nice weather, children getting out, firehouse, it was a large, large crowd there. Um, I had a little over twelve hundred full-size candy bars, I have a few left that I brought in here. The city did not pay for those simmer down, um, so, um, again, it was just a large crowd of continuous, and I think it was a wonderful event. So thank you to, um, Carly Bordeck, who put that on, and also a co-sponsors with the Chamber and the city of Woodland. Any questions or comments on that? Anything, questions for me? Okay, let's move into consent items.
Make a motion to approve consent items B.
Second.
Any questions or comments about the minutes from the last council meeting? All right, Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
All right, moving into the action items, action item C, approve vouchers for October twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve, second.
Vouchers, any comments or questions from anybody in the audience or online about the city's spending for the month of October, or anyone on council? Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Moving into action item D, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Callis County for jail services. I want to make a correction here, I screwed up, I put an extra zero there, it is a hundred and sixty thousand, not one point six million dollars. If you read the backup, it talks about the hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and the hundred and sixty thousand is what is in the budget, not one point six million dollars. So I apologize for that mistake.
Small.
Make a motion to approve action item B?
Second.
So I have a first and a second, any questions or comments from the community or on council about this? Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
The ayes have it, moving into action item F, authorize the mayor to sign interlocal agreement for the provision of ambulance transport services with Clark County Emergency Medical Service District Number Two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So I have a first by Ms. Ho, or Ms. Doughty, and a second by, um, Mr. Burke. Any comments or questions on this agreement here with Clark County?
I'd just like to say they're a good group of people, abused them, and they're great.
Yeah, and their response time, I mean, you can work with them and they will tell us their response times, I mean, it's very responsive with them, so. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Moving into action item G, ordinance fifteen eighty-one, fixing the amount to be provided by ad valorem taxes upon the property in the city of Woodland in twenty twenty-six. And approving an ordinance summary for publication as more particularly set forth herein, first reading.
Move to approve, second.
So this is about setting property taxes at the prior year's level? What was that?
Zero percent.
Yep, zero percent, there would be no, uh, increase? The city would not be collecting total dollars more than the previous year. Any conversation from the community, anyone from the council?
I just appreciate that we're continuing to do this for our citizens for as long as we can.
Yep. Agreed. Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Moving into action item H, resolution number eight zero nine, authorizing the mayor to utilize funds from a matured municipal investment account to pay down principal on a municipal loan for filter two and three and return to the term compliant payment schedule.
Motion to approve, second.
So I have a first from Ms. Doughty and a second from Mr. Frymark, just so people are aware of this, um, we went through our investments here, oh, probably six months ago, where we talked about the, um, twelve to thirteen million dollars that we have invested. And that we're up at around, um, four to four and a half percent, the bond rate has come down, we just, um, renewed one for three point seven five for five years. Um, I'm sorry, for three years, um, to twenty twenty-seven. Um, but we had another one that came, uh, that matured, and it was, uh, a little over eight hundred thousand dollars that came. If you look at our, uh, investment policy and our, um, spending policy for the city of Woodland, those filters have a life of fifteen years and the loan is for twenty years. That is out of compliant. At the same time, there are a few things that we need to do when we talk about grants, so as we get closer to, um, exit twenty-one doing grants, we talk about the Gun Club grant. Um, we talk about down here on Atlantic, the, um, sidewalks that we did with grant funding. You know, our Public Works Department does great going out and getting grants, but it all is a sliding scale, a, um, point. How much debt you have, how much you have in investments, what does your, um, audit report findings say? Lot of things go into that, so one, cleaning up our audit findings, two is paying down some of the debt, making sure that we're within our own spending guidelines and policies. So this is one of those things where, when it came due, had the conversation and we said, hey, we need to get in compliance with this, what can we do? So you'll see, action item H is to use one of those funds, we will still have, you know, a little over twelve million dollars out there. And if the, the next one resolution comes forward is to use our reserves to pay that off, which we are allowed to do. So between the eight hundred thousand dollars and a couple hundred thousand in reserves, we will be able to pay that off, um, instead of making payments for the next twenty years. So, just wanted everyone in the community and online in the room to understand what we're trying to do. Questions or comments on all that?
Were those payments on that loan annually or monthly?
So interest is accrued monthly, but then we pay quarterly.
Oh, seriously?
Yep. All right, and we do have reservoir four that is out there still, so. Okay, I have a first and a second.
Is it in compliance?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That one is in compliance. Questions, comments, before we take a vote? Ms. Hogan? This is for resolution number, um, eight oh nine.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
The ayes have it, moving into action item I, resolution number eight ten, authorizing the mayor to utilize funds from the water utility reserves account to pay off the municipal loan for filter two and three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So I have a first from Mr. Houston and a second from Ms. Doughty, again, this is the additional that will come out of the reserves that will then pay that loan for filters two and three completely off. Questions or comments from the community, Ms. Doughty?
I just would say, I am really glad that we're able to go ahead and just pay this loan completely off if we pass this. Um, I think that's great for the city to be able to say that this one's taken care of so quickly. Um, so thank you for the way we've invested our money and the way we've built up our reserves for all the, um, new city businesses and new housing that has come in. All the fees that we have collected has allowed us to really build up our reserves, so I think it's great that we're not having to impact the city with this cost.
Um, I would just like to give kudos again, words due to those five individuals over there, they hear me chirp every Wednesday morning. We're cheap, people were cheap, so.
Cheap.
Cheap, 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 so, um, and they're nodding their heads, so, um, with that, any other comments? Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Friend?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Frymark?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
The ayes have it, moving into action item J, resolution eight twelve, establishing water sewer and stormwater utility rates for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
Make a motion to approve action item J?
Second.
So I have a first from Mr. Houston and a second from Ms. Rounds. Let's have a little bit of conversation here, I want community members to be able to be involved, I want council to be here. Um, so at the last council meeting, um, we talked about, um, rate increases of roughly seventeen percent. What did that do to somebody who is in tier one, where their average bill is a hundred and fifty-eight dollars and it moves it to a hundred and seventy dollars? I know Ms. Doughty over here is out of the charts and she's up in tier four, tier five if we had it.
Only in the summer.
Um, so what was discussed in that, um, workshop and, um, a little bit of direction was, hey, is there a blended, is there something else that we can do? And so discussion with staff, what we talked about, and Riley came up with an idea and I really like it, was, hey, what if we did half, one year, half? Um, so it's a thirteen percent and a thirteen percent, and what does that look like for it? Um, I want to talk about why we're doing this here again as well. When we talk about filter two and three in fifteen years, it, this thirteen percent increase here is going to give us about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars a year, is what we're doing. We're not looking at making millions and millions of dollars here, and we're not looking, you know, of just making five or ten thousand. So, one, it's building up that reserve, why did we not do this last year? Last year, we remember, we had about four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars of past due collects, collections that we went and collected and we really busted around and said, hey, we need our money, we're not the bank of Woodland anymore. Um, so now it gets to the point where we say, hey, that hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, what is the right direction for us? Fifteen years from now, um, I probably won't be sitting here in fifteen years, filter two and three will need to be redone, it was eight to nine hundred thousand dollars. You look at inflation, what it's going to cost in fifteen, twenty years to do that, it'll probably be a million, three, million, four dollar project. Hopefully we have reserves instead of taking loans out. So that is where I had the conversation and I said, okay, what's the right thing to do? Second, there was that F C S study that was done in twenty, uh, twenty, twenty nineteen. Second, there was that FCS study that was done in twenty uh twenty, twenty nineteen. We need to get in compliance with our ordinances and our um funding. That was passed by city council meetings. Why are we doing this at the end of the year, because that's the next thing that happens? So according to Washington Utility Transportation Commission, WTC, who we can work with. But we as a municipality are not required to have them approve it, we as a council approve it. Those rates are required to go in by January first, and to do that, we have to have council approval here in November. So that we can then put it in our budget and go into twenty twenty-six. So, does that explain a little bit of why we're doing this in November? Why we're increasing and suggesting that this year versus last year, how we got past that, and what we're trying to do for the future, Mr. Friend?
Yeah, it does make sense, and I had a good conversation with Riley earlier, kind of, I asked a couple of questions about, well, what, what are the costs of your supplies going up by? And so we didn't have a rate increase last year, and I think the strategy that Riley's putting forward of thirteen percent this year, thirteen percent next year. But then getting us to a steady five and a half, his supply rates are going up by eleven, eleven percent every year. So, the idea is not to burden the citizens, it's to try to recoup enough money to keep things moving forward. I also think it's important to remember, it's not just water coming into your house, this is also taking care of things like storm drains on the street, right? I know a lot of us drive around and we come around the corner and all of a sudden there's a lake on the corner, these funds are taking care of that as well. So I, I mean, there's a lot at play here, um and it's more than just the water bill, right? The other thing that we were kind of joking about is that we get this bill and we're like, wow, this is a really big bill. We have to remember sometimes that that also includes trash, so I think we were looking at breaking that away, but that will help give you a better picture of actually what is your water bill? Versus what is your water and garbage bill, um so, and I think it worked out to be ten bucks a month?
Twelve dollars, so, um we are, Riley, I think is biting the bit over there to get on that microphone. Um, so the garbage piece will be bringing forward to another council, they gave us a contract. It was one of those things where went back and forth, I wanted to protect the city and the community members a little bit more. Um, these guys did a great job identifying a few things in that contract, and so we're not ready for prime time to bring that forward yet. Hold on one second, I think, you got anything there, sir? You look like you were ready.
No, I'll just play cleanup for all the remaining questions, so after the discussion is over.
Okay, Ms. Doughty, then we'll go to Mr. Hall.
So I know that it had it out for a three-year plan with the five point five after that, but I know we also had mentioned that it might be time for a new rate study. Are we planning to do a new rate study before that actual five point five?
Twenty twenty-seven is what we will build that into the budget to do. So we would put a rate increase this year, then we would have one in twenty twenty-six, and then we would have that FCS study in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, so that five point five, we would plan on doing no matter what the FCS study shows? Or is that tentative depending on what the study shows?
So we'll go back out to study in twenty twenty-seven, that study will actually happen in twenty twenty-eight and be implemented in twenty twenty-nine. So we'll be looking at, based off this structure, we'll be looking at going through twenty twenty-seven at a five point five. And then accruing a five point five for the years remaining until the study is complete, um and then after that, it'll set a new rate structure.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Hall?
Uh, most people I know don't relate to percentages, they, they relate to what they have to pay. And if you look at what you have to pay under this proposal, it's less than ten bucks a month difference. For the average user, and that includes about three quarters of the people in Woodland, so we're looking at, you know, less than ten bucks. Increasing the utilities, and I can relate to that number.
So, and Riley's gonna be over there laughing, so I toy him with you, Mr. Hall. And I feel Ms. Doughty's pain over there, um so.
You don't feel my pain.
So one of the things I asked Riley to do was to give us all twenty-two hundred meters. And then with this thirteen percent increase and to calculate it, what it out is. Again, when we say the average is twelve dollars, yes, we have some people such as Ms. Doughty that is, you know, substantially higher. We do have some people that are, you know, single individual that are there. If you start getting the median here, it is going to be, you know, a little bit higher than that twelve to thirteen dollar range. But that is the average of our community, and I just think it's important to realize, you know, thirteen percent increase is difficult to swallow. Uh, when we look at the chemicals and what we're putting, you know, the increases there, it's tough.
I also just wanna say that I'm thankful that you did listen to the feedback after our last meeting. And not go straight to the twenty-seven percent increase, because that would have been a hard pill to swallow.
Yep, agree.
Well, I'd also like to point out that the main reason why we're able to do a less percentage increase than what is expected or where we should be based off the SES group study. I know a lot of people don't agree or like the new developments, but that is a large reason of why we're able to reduce the rate increases. All those assessment fees for water and sewer go into our reserves, they do not go into our, our normal yearly budget for revenues. Uh, so we're able to bank that, so by the time we get caught up on our percentages, we'll be in a good spot to move forward with, without having those assessment charges.
And again, broken record here, the assessments and the um impact fees and all those are going over and setting to the side. We are not just nearly willing those dollars away. So, any questions from the community, anyone online, any other questions about this? Um, this is something that I don't take lightly, raising these um water fees, it's difficult, I totally understand that. Um, I just think it's in the best interest of the city of Woodland and the sustainability of um the government.
I would also like to just clarify that your average utility bill with five CCF of usage, I know there was some dollar amounts getting thrown around up there, but. Um, total dollar amount that from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six would be nine dollars and sixty-eight cents per month. So, just to kind of put that in actual dollar reference, I know we look at percentages, percentages can be scary, but that's an actual dollar amount per month.
And again, five um CCF, that is roughly, you know, thirty-seven to thirty-eight hundred gallons per month. Um, if you look at the average, that then breaks it down, if you go further down, Mr. Hall, I'm a numbers person here, so if you break that down even further. It is around two hundred um gallons, a little less than two hundred gallons a day, and if you look at your average shower. Your shower is twenty gallons, but then if you fill up your bathtub, you know, my wife, if she's listening. Um, those are usually, you know, forty-five to fifty gallons, depending on her soaker tub. So, again, you break this down here, and to get to that five CCF, it's, you know, four or five people can shower.
And if we don't do this, it's not showing that we're trying to do our part in order to get grants. And so, uh, that's matching funds. So, we have to show that we're doing something.
Hundred percent, that is a great, great comment, Ms. Rounds, is, again, it goes back to grants, which provides matching dollars. Into the city and making sure that you are collecting and doing what is best for your system, so, thank you for that comment. Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Rounds? Councilmember Burke? Councilmember Doughty? Councilmember Hall? Councilmember Frymark? Councilmember Houston? Councilmember Friend?
The ayes have it, the time is now seven thirty-seven and we will work into a workshop. Um, this workshop is for our budget for twenty twenty-six. Ms. Hogan, can you bring up the mayor's message? Oh, sorry, Travis, can you bring up the mayor's message? So, um, here is the mayor's message that I put together for uh the city and council. Um, so few items I just want people to really recognize. Last year, I was deep knee into this budget, I spent days, weekends, and really understanding. What was going on in um the budget for the city of Woodland as I got my arms wrapped around in my first year of election. Um, this year, we've got Terry who is here, um she has taken over the um city uh treasurer position. We've got five individuals who have now been with me for most of them uh for over a year now. Um, we've had extensive conversation. They all know exactly what the um priorities are here for this city. Is to live within our means, grow reserves where we can, provide security and roads to our community. Those are priorities in my um deal here. So what I want people to understand, the budget delivers no um tax increases, it foregoes that one percent. Revenues are higher than expenses, we typically have said we've had a balanced budget. Um, there is more revenue, uh more reserves, impact fees in those, so it's not balanced, we're actually spending less. Um, it's elimination of the city clerk treasurer position, so last year, we had um a clerk treasurer position. And she was out, and so we had kind of two positions that we were there, we've eliminated one and we've hired a city treasurer. Um, that is here, and Terry. Wage increases are per the collective bargaining agreements for all represented employees. Uh, we've replaced outdated computer equipment and additional server space, we use an outside server uh to house. And to provide us additional security for our IT. Uh, replacement of a patrol vehicle within the Woodland Police Department. Funding for a fully staffed police department and the school resource officer, I want people to understand that SRO is fully funded by the city of Woodland. There's no reimbursement, there's no funding by the Woodland School District, I know that I've seen things on social media, I've heard people come to me. And talk about it as long as I am mayor, that SRO will be there, whether we have to pay for it, the school district, it does not make a difference, it's a priority to me. And it is in uh the budget again this year, fully funded by the city of Woodland. Additional training and equipment for our police officers, there's uh preliminary engineering for exit twenty-one, we're currently in preliminary engineering phase. For exit twenty-one, that continues on, next year is the last year of those dollars that come through, um ARPA dollars. They had to be used by twenty twenty-six, and those are the dollars that come from Calitz County. And then it's the implementation of the utility billing software to bring utility billing in-house. So, um, want to be clear on this, to bring utility into in-house. Is something that will have to be approved by city council, um, the funding of the software is in the budget here. I can't unilaterally just say boom, we're bringing utility uh billing all in-house, council has to make that decision. But we've got the software in there and it will take some time to do that. If you look at the progression of what we've done, twenty twenty-four, we went to a new um accounting software. We've gotten rid of Vision and we've gone to Tyler Tech, then in twenty twenty-five, we've been implementing the payroll system that is on that. And then in twenty twenty-six, the next add-on would be bringing on the um utility in-house. Um, we think that we could do it with the resources and employees that we have, that's for another discussion, but I just want people to understand. That is where I am at, is bringing the utility billing into the house. With that, we will kick off our budget discussion, anyone have questions, comments on that letter right there? Yes, I have a typo in there, I understand that. I put patrol vehicles and it's patrol vehicle, I got Chief over there, he's just, so. Yeah, exactly, so, any question, Mr. Burke?
Uh, yeah, we, we already working with the software, we have it now, right?
So we have Tyler Tech software now, that is what, you know, these numbers here come out of, this is what we do our bars. When we pay our invoices, that's why you see new numbers, new um financial, yep. And that's then the next thing that comes on to that is accounting.
Is it, can we ask questions about? I was just curious, on the annual overtime for the police, is that just figured what? They're gonna use for the year, okay, so one of the super, just because they work at the time of overtime.
Correct, so if you look at our schedules, um, and we can get into this here in the budget when we get there, Gabe, so I'm not, I'll just kick it down here. So, uh, because the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna have Chief go through his budget. Again, last year, I gave all these presentations and I was, I want them to own it, because again, it's their budget, they're going to own it and they're gonna hear me harp on them. If they don't deliver their budgets in twenty twenty-six.
So, I'll speak to the salaries and benefits really quick before Chief gets into his, because I put that whole schedule together. Um, so that whole schedule is based on actual numbers year to date as of last week, and then we just amortize it for the remaining of the year, so. We use the current, what we have spent for overtime across all departments and then kind of found an average for each month. And then tacked on the last two, three remaining months of the year, this is what's gonna be ex- expected. Um, we also had some rate increases, that's due to outside agency stuff out of our control for the benefits portion. And this year, I added to this salary schedule, the boot and uniform allowance, that is something written into the CBA that's been missed on the schedules. We felt it was important because it is a benefit we provide to the staff, so we wanted to paint that pict- clear picture of what we're actually, the city is paying in benefits for each of these employees. You'll notice a couple of line items, um for the public works department, they have an on-call phone, but if they get called out, it's hard to ta- dictate. Who that is, and obviously overtime rates are gonna be different for everyone depending on where they fall on the salary schedule. So we just took an average and said, this is what it would cost for public works to come out. On, based on current, how many times they're being called out to do any kind of work, that's how we kind of figured it out. These numbers are a little bit more, we feel a little bit more accurate than um years past, just looking at actual data and amortizing it a little bit. Same with the um officer in charge, field training officers, and the shift diff. We kind of just took our best guess on what we did this year and what will happen next year.
Back on the original question with Gabe though, um, the reason there's so much overtime is because of their shifts. And the coverage that we have to have, and then, again, filling to what our city needs with those fifteen officers. Versus going and saying, we know people are gonna be on vacation, we know that there's somebody that's on short-term or long-term disability. Let's go hire and go to eighteen people, so that's what's driving it all.
I was just curious, is, does, if somebody worked a ton of overtime, if that's what it was just showing.
Yeah, we did have a couple officers that worked a lot of overtime this year, and that was due to officers going on light duty, which you can't always predict. Um, and then obviously if an officer is out sick for any time or reason, that also plays a contributing factor.
Do you want to pull up the salary, that is the next item on there, and then we'll, from there, we'll go into the draft budget. So if you pull up the salary schedule, so that people can see what it is, what we're discussing and talking about. So here is our schedule, and what we do here, so we list every employee that's within the city, um, we have their hourly rate. Um, so if they're represented, it is purely off of the collective bargaining agreement that is out there. And then for the non-represented employees, such as Amanda, Terry, let's just go right down the list, uh Travis, Riley, and Chief. Those are off of the admin salaries, where they got their three and a half percent, where we talked about at the last city council meeting. Um, and they go to their next step after a year, and so that is based purely off of that sched- schedule um that is in their contracts. And then what we do is we go through and we add longevity pay, which everything is per their contract, longevity pay, educational certificate. Certification pay, um access on-call, um and it just goes all the way across. And we come down to what it is for the each individual, um total cost, and it comes down, total cost to the city. Mr. Burke?
Are we gonna get a booklet of those printed so we can go through it?
Yep, absolutely, this here is the preliminary kicking off of what is building up to that, so that we can have a discussion and conversation. It'll be just like last year, but this is here, make sure that there's, as they go through their budgets, say, hey, could we do this or redo that, so, yep.
I'd just like to see that, so we don't forget about it. You know, when we get another mayor that's not as money savvy as you, um, you know.
Hundred percent.
And I post all this online, um, under the twenty twenty-six budget, so we can always refer back to it. I think I have twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five on there of like all the doc, working documents, drafts, and also the final, so we could go back if we want to, yeah. Hundred percent.
Okay, so, um, next, you wanna go back to that other one and look at the high-level preliminary budget before we kick it off to Gibbs and his. Awesome presentation like he calls it, okay, so here is our um high-level budget of what we have put together. Uh, again, living within our means is instilled in our head. So, we've got revenues here, if you look at our general fund, and this is our property taxes, this is our sales tax. Going through all of those, we collect roughly seven point four million, um and then our expenses leave us about seven point three million. About a hundred thousand dollars to the good, um and we will get into each of these as we go along. Park, um we collect around two hundred fifty-six thousand, and we spend about a hundred eighty-seven thousand. Park, we collect around two hundred fifty-six thousand, and we spend about a hundred eighty-seven thousand. The street, park, the little bit of difference there is, JJ, as you're looking at me, is that we have park impact fees.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Moving into street, one point three, one point four versus one point two million. And then the document recording fee, that's when people sell a house, that money goes in, and then goes right out to Woodland Action Center. Then one oh seven is our hotel motel. Those are dollars that we collect for hotel rooms, and then we give that out as LTAC dollars. Debt service, those are paying down our debts for various things, the fire station, the police station, those items. Next items is the capital projects that we have out there. Again, this is the filters, these are reservoir four, these are those large projects that are out there in the city. Impact fees for the fire, that is just revenue that we collect, two hundred eighty-four thousand. There's three hundred sixty-six thousand that gets broken out into the impact fees for the park. And then, impact fees for transportation is three point nine.
Do we keep those impact fees from the fire department?
So, the fire department, there are certain things we can do, and we've had discussions with them, and we're talking about bringing it forward to you of whether or not we should turn those dollars over to the fire department, so that we can pay off our share of the fire building over here, next door. Those are things that we can and can't do, and one of those is to pay that off, so...
I just want to add real quick that these preliminary numbers were built in with the rate increases for twenty twenty-six, so...
Assuming the thirteen percent rate increase for water. Yep. And then you got water, collecting three point two, and then, uh, three point one million out of expenses, and then sewer is three point one, and out is two point nine of expenses, and then stormwater comes right in. All right? So what the plan is here is to go through these. When you get to the general fund, we'll do general. We'll have Chief tonight and Travis tonight. And then at the next council meeting, we will go through Riley's budget, which is the parks, streets, and all of those. All right? Out of our general fund, when we talk about our expenses here, up at the top, we had three million sixty-seven dollars. A good portion of those expenses are the police department, three point nine million dollars. So, we spend seven point three, over half of it is the police. It's all you, Chief Gibbs.
You're welcome for our service.
Use a mic, please. And then we'll go over to your presentation.
Did you have a question?
Walk through this presentation for them, please.
I've officially survived twelve months as the chief here, so thank you, council and mayor, for allowing me to continue to be your chief. If any of you know me, I'm basic and to the point, so there is no flashy slides, there's no cool music. If that's something you desire, and you keep me around, I'll work on that for next year. So, obviously, slide one is self-explanatory. You don't need me to read that, do you? I will.
No, continue.
Okay. Slide two, we can, we could read aloud as well, but essentially, if you want to read that, it just reflects kind of the budget that we're, we're working with here, or why we're proposing what we're proposing. I'll give you a second to, unless anybody would like me to read that as well. Are we okay?
Nope, continue.
So the next one, I used some colors to try to trick you guys. This is actually just the breakdown of our, our current department. So it says total personnel is nineteen, we're actually sitting at seventeen personnel. We're still working to hire the, the two additional. That's just the basic breakdown. The chief, I have three sergeants, we have one detective, our school resource officer. Total eleven patrol, two, our two clerks. I know that Mayor Dynard had mentioned our school resource officer is completely funded by our, our department. I have had conversations with Asha, the school superintendent. There may be some potential in the future to have the school cover, like, maybe some overtime costs when he goes to a dance or a football game or something like that. Right now, our office is, is paying for all of that when it occurs.
Yeah. I want to be clear here, so we are paying, he has a set schedule, Roberto does, but again, oh, there's a homecoming, there's prom, there's different things that go on. Again, all that has to get approved by Chief, and he, you know, does approve it, but him and I are fully supportive and say, hey, these are events, and these are things where it's great to have a presence there, and so we do spend the money. Just like a patrol vehicle, uniforms, all of those things, it's not just the individual labor of Roberto, so...
Yeah.
So, I have a quick question on that. If, like, say prom, if it's out of town, does he still go to those type of functions, being an SRO officer, or is it only in?
We've only been doing events that occur at our, our school, so, yeah. Next slide. Question mark? This one's a little hard for you guys probably to see. Melissa actually has a hard copy, but that one's still hard to read, too. It just gives the, the total breakdown of like, our, our, our bar's codes, what we pull our budget from, best of our, our best guesses or estimates. I know we've already talked about the salaries. So the largest portions that you'll see here, between salaries, personal benefits, and then the uniform allowance, that actually makes up about seventy-nine percent of the entire budget for the police department, so that's not even covering vehicles and, and training and, you know, the other technology and stuff that, that we've added. Another big portion of that is if, if you guys remember, last year, we negotiated with Axon on a ten-year contract for dash cams and body cams. That's costing us approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year. However, we used the end of twenty twenty-four's budget to pay for twenty-five, so this year, we didn't, didn't come out of this budget. Next year, it's gonna have to come out of our budget, so there's an additional hundred grand there. And then we're only adding a single car this year. Last year, we added three. We have two older cars that we use as backups. One of them is extremely high mileage, probably needs to be outfitted as more of a pool car. I think it's a liability to have an officer in it. It's a twenty sixteen model car, it's extremely high mileage. We don't prefer to use that, but if we have to in a situation, we will use it. This just gives us an additional marked car, so we can cycle out another one, and it can go to be a backup for emergency situations. Those are the biggest impacts, and things that we really can't control is dispatching services, the care and custody of prisoners, which is the inter-local agreement you guys agreed on tonight. We are, I don't want to say held hostage, but there's only one game in town when it comes to those things, and those are the people that we have to work with to sign those contracts. We don't have the ability to negotiate outside of our county, or to go even, you know, outside of the state or whatever. It's just, that's the way that it is, so... I did reduce the care and custody of prisoners by about twenty thousand from last year. We didn't even come close to hitting it, but that's kind of a, a hidden foolish number where we get, if you think of the jail as like a hotel, anytime we book somebody, we have to pay a fee to keep them in jail. So if a, a judge sentences somebody to twelve months in our local jail, we are paying that fee every day for three hundred and sixty-five days until they're released. Due to, you know, the COVID stuff and jail restrictions in the past, they haven't really come all the way back to letting us book any and all people. So that number is very dependent on what the jail allows there, a private entity, the sheriff's office, no law enforcement can tell them what to do. They can tell us, nope, we're not taking them, yes, we will. And that's really what that number is based off of, so that number could fluctuate. And then to touch back on the, the salaries portion of that, I know we talked about the overtime rates. We're a small agency, it's small agency problems. At one point, we had four officers out. Two of them were work-related injuries, one was a personal injury, and another was out on baby leave. So, that's not normal, but when you're an agency our size and you have four bodies missing, there, we have no choice but to fill those gaps with overtime, so... When you guys look at the salaries of individuals, too, as Melissa had asked me before we started, you'll notice some of those are extremely higher. Well, there's some officers that will pick up any and all overtime that's available, and there's some that will pass on any and all overtime that's available. So that's why those numbers are so big. It's not because they're, it's a seniority-based thing, but if somebody passes, when it's their turn to book, it goes to the next person, so... Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions if people have them about those lines, otherwise, we can continue on.
Now, when, when we send a person to jail, if he, if it's a misdemeanor, we're charged. If it's felony, we're not charged, right?
No, the felonies are actually covered under the sheriff's office, so, but, but we still are paying overall fees. If you looked at the inter-local agreement, it's gone up, I think roughly five-ish percent. The, the jail actually started out at fifteen percent increases before the summer, when we started negotiations. All the chiefs, we attended this, and we kind of went back and forth, and this was the best number that we can get for now, so that's where we are.
Hold on. All right, so, I know, because Woodland has a little bit in Clark County, if we make any arrests in Clark County, do they still go to the Calitz County jail?
No. If it happens in Clark County, even if it's like a speeding ticket at the area of Lake Shore, that, that's Clark County, we're actually supposed to check the box that sends that to their courts, so traffic and criminal.
Do we have fees, like, we are paying to Calitz County for Clark County?
That's a great question, that I'll find an answer to you before the next meeting.
Okay, great.
It's not often that that happens. More often than not, we're, we're booking in our jail under our jurisdiction. It's been very rare occasions where we've had to do that.
I believe it's just the hoteling prices what we pay on there. We don't have a set fee, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Chief can come back, but I believe that's what it is that we pay.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you. Keep going. This one, okay. Yeah, so, I've made no secrets about this, and, and Mayor Dynard had kind of already hinted that, you know, we're over fifty percent of the budget. Police departments across the entire state are averaging around low sixties to the high sixties for budget consumption. It's unfortunate, but it costs money to have public safety. We don't have a large revenue source. I mean, we could have officers out there writing a thousand tickets a day, but by the time we pay all the fees, it's just not gonna happen. This is based off of projections. The first one of repairs and maintenance of the building, that's actually gonna be an expense. That's a rough estimate. We don't really know. The biggest issue we've had in this building is plumbing. That seems to be a constant thing every year. I, I anticipate that to continue to be an issue with the plumbing. And then this year, we definitely are gonna have, if, if anybody's noticed in the daylight, there's a ton of moss on the building. We're gonna have to have that cleaned to, to save our roof. Outside of that, it's, it's very unpredictable. The other revenue source, resources are, are pretty much based off of our comparables from this year, so we didn't really increase them. It's a total potential revenue of forty-eight, twenty-five, but, again, we're not like a revenue source. We're not making money for the city. Well, that's just the reality.
The more tickets we write does not mean the more revenue we get.
No, and, and I know this is a live recording. I hope people are tuning in and watching, and if not, you can share this all over the YouTube. At the end of the day, by the time we write a ticket, an average ticket is about a hundred and thirty-nine dollars. By the time we pay court fees, fees to the state and everything else, and then if they request an officer to be present as well to fight a speeding ticket, we are paying that officer to show up to court. They don't do that for free, and there's also stuff in the collective bargaining agreement that if it's a, a day off, they're, they're getting additional hours for the inconvenience of that, so sometimes, we are losing money when we write tickets. That's why I said, we could have every officer in this building write a thousand tickets a day. We won't scratch the surface for revenue. It just, it's not gonna happen. With that said, our officers are still out there working diligently and pulling people over, so please, drive safe.
And they know to write tickets.
And they know, yes.
Don't we give them a dollar so they get on the bus and go somewhere else?
I mean, we can't, but you, you certainly could donate. If there's no questions there, we can move on to the next one. And this is just department priorities that really won't change from year to year. Maintaining the adequate staffing, expanding our training, officer wellness programs, our technology. Unfortunately, everything we do nowadays involves computers and everything else. Computers need updated. Obviously, strength our community policing, and, and the school resource officer is a big part of that. And then facilitating, uh, equipment upgrades for safety and efficiency, that just goes into more of our vehicles and, and our officers' equipment, individual stuff here, too. Next. Really, the most important part was the slide with all the dollars on it. I'm sure that's what you guys cared most about, so... This other stuff is just cool fluff, because I want to look like I know what I'm doing. So, we want to maintain our inter-local partnerships for dispatch detention, animal control services. We've already gone over kind of some of those things. Continuing monitoring operational costs, which is fuel, maintenance, and overtime. That's another big one. The cost of fuel, Washington State highest taxed gas rates in the entire country. There's gonna be more coming this year, too. You know, we want our officers to be out and active, but they're burning gas, you know, while they're out there doing the stuff, so that's one that, like, it, it's hard to predict. We, we kind of go with a little bit higher number. I think actually, this year, we exceeded what was in the budget for last year as far as fuel is consumed. So, I added a little bit extra to it this year in hopes that we will be under it. And then maintain a balanced approach to resource allocations and community service delivery. And then the last slide. Conclusion, Woodland Police Department's twenty twenty-six budget proposal ensures the city continues to receive effective, transparent, community-focused policing through the strategic investments in people, equipment, and technology. The department is well positioned to protect and serve Woodland's residents in the years ahead, so it's a total proposed budget of four million one hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions. Anybody has any, but that's, that's my budget in a nutshell.
When we consolidate it all up, we are able to fit those needs. He came in with about four point eight...
Five, four point five.
Well, we'll debate that later, but, anyway. And again, it was important to come back with, you know, how do we live within our means? Some of the things was, hey, could we add a administrative-type lieutenant position, something to help? And I said, hey, I appreciate that. I think that's great. I would like to, you know, find something such as that, but however, under the economic conditions and where we're at as a city, I just don't think that those are the resources that we have. So, he reduced that and came back with a budget that was in line. For full transparency here. Questions on?
Nothing.
That with Mr. Gibbs? I think there's two things to take away here, is people need to understand. The priority here is community, and providing that there. And so it's not a matter of write tickets, write tickets, write tickets. There's a balance here between what you write tickets and what you do spending time in the community, and having your vehicle, and being that individual that is out there. So there's one there. And I think the second one is technology. We have really pushed for Chief and the department to become more technological advanced with Axon and those things, but as part of that, it is going to cost our city, you know, and that's additional protection for the city. It's a win-win, but it is gonna be more expensive. Anything you would throw on that, Chief?
That's perfect.
One thing I would add about technology is the police department, given their strict structure, they require extra security and things like that, so they are always gonna be higher in IT expenses, just because their laws change and we have to abide by those.
Yeah, and that's, part of what we're, we're budgeting, too, is this building, I think, was twenty twelve when it was put in place. The security cameras in this building have never been updated, so we are going to have to update those cameras this year. That's just another technology issue that we have to deal with, but it'll be another decade or so before we have to upgrade them again, so that's positive.
Travis?
So, the community development budget is relatively simple and stable from year to year. We have, unfortunately, I'm sorry, I don't have a presentation like the mayor does, so I'll try and keep this fast. Strictly, what I do is my salaries and benefits are calculated by the clerks and the treasurer's office, because they figure out what those rates are gonna be. I take a look at the existing permitting level and the amount of development that's occurring this year, and I extrapolate what's gonna happen next year. So for this year's budget, I estimated that we would do fifty single-family residential units. We would do thirty multifamily residential units. And those are based upon permit activities from this year and the, the projects that have been approved and are likely to begin construction next year. And then I calculate how much that will mean in impact fees for schools, parks, the transportation, and the fire district. And so when you look at my budget, my, my expenses don't change significantly from year to year. But I show all this revenue coming in that ends up going into the Public Works Department, so that's where their numbers are coming from, is based upon that. And on the commercial and industrial side, I've estimated that we're gonna have about four hundred thousand square feet of new commercial and industrial begin construction next year. And those impact fees are paid at the building permit issuance. So, if you have any questions about that, you can give me a call, and I can talk to you about project-specific estimates of what I think is gonna begin construction next year. But, again, another quirk with my budget, and that is we collect our fees at the start of the process on the land use side, and so I estimate how many, one subdivision, two short plats, a couple boundary line adjustments, some site plans. I can estimate those revenues, and they correspond to how much time I spend on those projects. But on the building side, because we use an external consultant, and it takes a while for building permits to come in. So we show a significant amount of revenue this year, but the expenses won't come until the next budget schedule, so it's one of those quirks that, the more work I have come in this year, it might mean the more expenses there are gonna be the next year. But there's always a correspondence. But there's always a corresponding collection before that expense occurs, so, um, relatively simple for me, I, I mean, I have a few thousand dollars of, um. Training budget, but none of it really.
Twenty-five hundred dollars of training budgets, which saves flat, he's got his labor that is in there. I wanna be clear on the fifty, um, permits homes here, it's not a new subdivision, so if you look at the roughly three hundred homes and the various subdivisions that are out there. Again, it's timing, you know, how many permits, how many, you know, new construction will those come through the door, um, what do we think will take? Um, and again, when we issue that permit, and just because we issue the permit doesn't mean the house is going to get built right away. And the occupancy is gonna be taken right away as well, so it's a catch twenty-two on that piece there. And those impact fees go into our reserves and we are saving those and not using those dollars.
So of all of the new build area that we have, we had roughly three hundred total?
Um, three hundred that have been, um.
Permitted, permitted?
Constructed and are buildable lots.
Okay, so we have an issue permits, I use.
Right, but how many, so three hundred buildable lots is pretty much what we're saying.
Yeah.
So how many of those do we have left to collect money on?
So we have received, uh, about a hundred and thirty building permits and about sixty of them have been issued and are in construction. So, um, as the mayor mentioned, they slowly come in and they'll start the foundation, move to the next lot and.
So when you get the hundred and thirty that have come in, those are all coming in with the fees or not until you issue the permit?
So, on the building side, um, when an application is received, we collect a plan review fee. Because that goes to the consultant and the consultant reviews the building permits, if it meets the building code. It just kind of sits in a black hole until they actually begin construction. And when they are ready to begin construction is when the impact fees and the connections fees come in.
So of those hundred and thirty, how many have we comple- collected impact fees on so far?
I believe about sixty.
Okay.
In that neighborhood, and then on the industrial side, it's the bigger the development, so we might get eighty percent of our industrial impact fees. With one building permit and then it might be ten building permits that get us the other twenty percent, cause it depends upon the size. So I can estimate the total, I just can't predict when and.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions on that? So that's what we have this week for the budget, and again, it, when we get it to the total here, we will all match up and line up. That we will be underneath our revenues and living within our means, but I want them to own and walk through what it is that they are delivering on and what they are doing. Again, Travis's organization clearly is just him and.
We'll do public works next week.
The public works will be in two weeks. Our Thanksgiving presentation. The real budget, yeah. So, all right, any questions from the community or anyone here on council? Okay, the time is now eight twelve and we will leave, um, the workshop. And the time is now eight thirteen, have a good evening, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.